All right, it looks like we have enough to start.
You can have a lot of fun.
One, two, three, one, two, and Shank will be here in just a few minutes. Barbara, tell me when you're ready. City is away. East corridor study as our first item of business. We currently have two members of council present, myself and Councilman Britton. Councilman Shank will be here shortly. And we will proceed from here. Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn it over to you? And you can turn it over to Metro Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this work session is to give city council an opportunity to review the regional northeast corridor study. That is being, it's an initiative of Metro Plan Orlando. It is a joint planning study between Metro Plan and the local jurisdictions within the corridor that they have established. Basically, the corridor runs from Sanford, southward to UCF. And Miss Gabby Sorato?
Sorato, yes.
Gabby Sorato is with us tonight, and she is going to present the study to the council and the PBA.
We just call her Gabby over at Metro Plan. It's much easier.
Much easier, absolutely. Then my name's gonna be even more complicated in April, so. Thank you so much for hosting me today. As we mentioned, my name is Gabby Sorato. I'm a transportation planner over at Metro Plan Orlando. And so, a little bit of, there we go, a little bit of history on this, on this study itself. Back in October, the Seminole County, the city of Sanford, and a couple of other people basically approached us because in the FDOT's acquisition of the Sunrail mainline, there is a clause that states that FDOT could purchase the Aloma spur for $10. And so, the interested parties basically, you know, came to Metro Plan and said, okay, you know, what can we do? What are the possibilities sort of with this corridor? And instead of us, you know, hiring a consultant to do an alternative analysis and so forth, we decided to sort of take on the existing conditions portion of the study. So basically, usually, an alternative analysis, you know, looks at the existing conditions and then continues to narrow it down, down to a single mode. So what we decided to do is just, basically, just look at what is currently there. And so, the next step, if FDOT decides to take it, is to go for, you know, go for a consultant and basically continue to narrow down to a preferred mode of choice. Okay? So in our, in our study itself, the one where we'll be releasing the final draft at the end of this month, we'll be handing it out to, to all of our stakeholders, and, you know, they may hand it out to everybody who, who wishes to see it. We're gonna touch on these topics: socioeconomics, land use, mobility, travel demand, and environmental. And so, at the, at the end of it, we will be listing all the sort of findings that we have come, any gaps that we have under the current existing conditions. And feel free to stop me as I go through the presentation, in case you guys have any questions in particular. You also have the presentation itself right in front of you. So, what is our study area? The study area is actually 98 square miles, which is pretty large for an average corridor study. The Aloma spur itself is about 10 and 1/2 miles, and that is the red line that you see from somewhere in the Sanford Sunrail station down to right about where the Cross-Seminal Trail starts. It actually ends about 700 feet west of the, what's the height, the school that is right over there in Winter Springs.
Winter Springs High School?
It's in Winter Springs, okay. In Winter Springs High School. And so, there are a couple-
Oh, you're talking about the elementary school?
The elementary school, yes.
Highland?
Yeah, well-
Is it a Highland? Layer?
Layer, thank you. So basically, it ends about-
Thank goodness the Public Works Director was there.
Excellent. So it ends about 700 feet west of that. There are current businesses that are, the freight, businesses that utilize the freight line, so it is an already existing, it's being currently used. So that is something that we have to keep in mind, because on the contract itself, the Sunrail mainline contract, it says that, sort of similar to how Sunrail is being, has been negotiated, you have to maintain freight usage on that corridor. So it definitely is being utilized. Then the, the spur, the study area goes into what we call the SR 434 section, which is mainly, obviously, SR 434 and on the western portions of 417. But our study, our study area itself is pretty darn big. The cities, obviously, that touch on the study area: Sanford, Winter Springs, Oviedo. We also invited our folks from Lake Mary and Longwood to our, to our meetings, because we also want their input, obviously, being so close to the study, to the study area itself. So, a little bit of the socioeconomic items for our study area. Household income, you'll see the highest incomes in red and in orange. Oviedo's pretty good when it comes to that, and Winter Springs as well. Our neighbors to the north, Sanford, are in the lower end of the spectrum. Obviously, surrounding UCF, we see the poor college student eating ram and noodles, so therefore, their income is not as high. But the good news is obviously, right on, just obviously in our area, right over here, we, you know, we have a pretty good base when it comes to household income. Household size, you also, guys, have a pretty good average household size, between 3 to 3.2, which means obviously that it's a little bit higher than, and you have more of the family homes that couldn't, that could require some more other mode of transportations. Up in Sanford, you get that as well, and then our folks, our neighbors in Winter Springs, it's sort of like a mixed, you know, mixed user when it comes to household size. Median age, you guys range between 33 to 44. So again, you get, I think in general, you already know sort of the statistics of your, of your residents. It's the middle-aged families that have two, perhaps one or two kids, that are, you know, they're doing pretty good in, in general.
Some at this table have four.
Some of them, they have four. Four or five, perhaps. Well, that's good.
I don't know. Bob, they just keep popping out of his shop.
Nice. Winter Springs is also in the mid-level range, and down in UCF, obviously, we have the younger crowd. Population over 65. They're primarily in Winter Springs. Because of the previous slide, we don't see that many here in Oviedo. And then we do have a pretty good, you know, base over in Sanford as well, on the southern, southerly end of Sanford. Households who transit, who use transit to go to work. UCF primarily is the main, obviously, the main people. Basically, everybody else decides to hop on their, hop on their vehicle. Zero-vehicle households, again, UCF, and then we see a pretty high demand up in Sanford.
Gabby?
Yes.
And did you all look at the students who are using the transit to go to school?
Internally, well, we do have the figures of people, of students that use the transit, but UCF transit, it, it goes mainly south and through Mitchell Hammock until the Onin Incorporated sections of Seminole County, basically, through it. But we do not have, for example, the internal numbers, the circulator number inside of UCF.
I was just curious. I know a number of Oviedo students use our flex service to go down to Seminole State.
Right, yes.
And so, it was just something I was curious about, if those were taken into account.
Yeah, no, we will see, when it come, when we come to the public transit to mobility section, you will see that obviously we have the flex. You guys are pretty well when it comes to mobility, because you have the Neighbor Link 622 that runs through your city, which is absolutely wonderful. Unfortunately, for other cities, they don't have that, so. So, mobility. So one of the findings that came up at the report, the map that you see is the shared use trails. These are general trails for bicycle, pedestrian, rollerblading that you see all over Seminole County. The biggest gap that we found is actually, let me do it on this one, so you all can see it. There is no connection, north-to-south connection, between Sanford and Winter, Winter Springs to the Cross-Seminal Trail. That's sort of, you know, the biggest, the biggest gap. And Seminole County wanted us to kind of put a focus, a spin of economic development onto the study, trying to connect Sanford, those folks in Sanford in the north section of Seminole County down to UCF. If there's any demand for travel demand, and then if there is, what kind of possibilities there is for economic development. So if you all know what sort of example that happened in Winter Garden, once the West Orange Trail was developed, that spurred a lot of development down through their downtown itself. So, we can, we can see that there is a gap, and that could, that's one of our findings, that, you know, this could lead to some form of connectivity and then economic development for this particular section of the area. But in our case, for Oviedo, we're, you know, we're pretty darn good. Obviously, you have the Cross-Seminal Trail that runs into your downtown and then goes right south into Katyway. So, I think in general, we're, we're pretty solid here. Links route, again, like we were mentioning before, you guys are pretty well-connected in general. You have the Neighbor Link 622 that runs through your system, and Seminole State College, I'm sorry, I didn't catch, I forgot the name of the gentleman, but you mentioned, obviously, we have a lot of demand for that. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but in general, it's, the links, Neighbor Link 622 is, compared to the other ones, is very successful to our area. For the folks that are north, unfortunately, if you go, it takes, if you're in Sanford and you wanna head down to Oviedo or UCF, it takes about 2 and 1/2 hours and 2 bus transfers. So in total, 3 buses to get down here. The SR, Links 434, the one that runs all along, obviously, State Road 434, it's, it takes about 20, I'm sorry, it runs 60-minute headways, which is not very convenient for somebody that wants, if somebody's looking for an alternative mode of transportation, you're not gonna waste 60 minutes at the bus stop to find the next bus. It needs to be something that is reliable, that is convenient, and so forth. So that is, again, that is another sort of finding that we have come up from our report, the level of service specifically along the 434 corridor, it is not the greatest. Any questions?
Any questions?
In land use. So we decided to split our study sort of into 2 separate sections. Again, it's a pretty large area in general, so it's better to sort of, you know, divide it up. The north section, the Sanford's, Orlando Sanford International Airport section, has the CRA? Obviously, we have the CRA, which is mainly all of their downtown, and then the CRA runs 1792. And through 1792, this area is considered brownfield by the state of Florida, so there is economic incentives that comes to that. Obviously, Sanford International Airport is a huge point of interest. We have 1.8 million travelers coming out of there, and their figures have actually sort of switched. Before, they used to be very international, very low domestic. Now, they're pretty much, you know, higher, I believe it's 52% domestic, 48% international. And they are, will continue to grow. That is, you know, that is wonderful. We do have some industrial uses right along the corridor, as I was explaining to some of you a little bit earlier today, and there are currently, they are being utilized today. Then obviously, we have the conservation areas along Lake Jessup, Soldier's Creek, and then we head into Winter Springs. Their new downtown, their older downtown, and it's still, obviously, there's a lot of demand on that side. And then, hold on, let me see, the next, oh, there we go, that's a better picture. Then their GID, Green Inter, Green Interchange District? Thank you, John. That is, they have some, some incentives that they've put forward, and we're not sure, so right now, I don't believe there's anybody sort of in the, in the shooting line for it, but it's there, and hopefully, it should be developed within the next 5 years or so. In our area, I was, I was already notified that we have, this is not your CRA, for some reason, unfortunately, the, I'm not sure where we gathered, this is all GIS layers, and I think this came from Seminole County, so that is definitely something that we need to check on, because that's really good, it's popping up. But anyway, so we have your Oviedo downtown, your Oviedo Mall, your ER that is coming out, obviously, is huge, that's humongous, is coming in, and then your lovely, the new downtown, which is gonna be great for other, for folks that live, don't live near the area, but will travel down here by bike. Seminole State College, and obviously, UCF and Research Parkway. So we have a lot of, sort of, points of interest, a lot of people, trip generators in this particular south side of the study area. All right, so travel demand analysis. One of the, one of the main things in our study is to analyze what is, if there is such thing as some form of demand between Sanford and UCF, right? So, with our stakeholders, when we have, when we have met, we have been meeting since probably October, we have decided, we decided that these are sort of the destinations. Sanford Sunrail, Sanford International Airport, Lake Mary, Longwood, Winter Springs, Oviedo, and the UCF Research Park area. So, basically, how our tool on our side, the traffic analysis zone tool works, is that this is usually used at the more regional level. This is what we use to do our long-range transportation plans, to analyze what is sort of the future demand that will be out there for our area, for our particular area. And so usually, this is sort of used, in a sense, you know, larger TACs, not really into the smaller sections, and, you know, so each one of these little blocks that you see is technically a TAC. But because our demand, our tool will not give us very accurate information, if we just narrow it down to that smaller level, we decide to block them together. So these are our travel sheds, the ones that you see the different colors. Obviously, Sanford, Sanford International, Lake Mary, Longwood, Winter Springs, Oviedo, and UCF. And so, the, you know, the way that we run our model is by trip generation and trip distribution. This is, the figures that you're about to see are mainly, they're, they're, they're just general transfer, you know, forecasted daily, daily trips. They, at this point, they have not, we have not narrowed down to what mode of transportation the person is taking, or they were forecasted to taking, it's just general numbers. So when we do our analysis, this is what comes out. And so, we tried to narrow it down, and that's our way of narrowing it down, and then this is what sort of comes out. This is, right now, this is what I'm presenting, it's just basically from the, the other TACs down to UCF. The full report will analyze from, eat from Winter Springs TAC to the Oviedo TAC, or Sanford to Winter Springs. But this right now is just from, to basically our biggest generator, which is UCF. And so, from, you know, we come to see that from Sanford down to UCF, we only have about a total of 793 trips. From Orlando International, Sanford International to UCF, 677. 656 from Lake Mary to UCF, 676. Longwood to UCF. Winter Springs, we, now we're starting to see a little bit higher number. 1970 from Winter Springs to UCF. And then our biggest one is 20,343 trips from Oviedo to UCF. Their second highest one was actually UCF to Sanford International with 11,000 trips. But basically, and what this tells us a little bit is that we have a large number of trips that people are taking, obviously, between the 2 TACs, and we can just presume, because there is, you know, we have 60-hour headways on the Link 434, and, you know, for example, the Neighbor Link technically doesn't go all the way down to, down to UCF, then most of these trips could, are probably being taken by single, single vehicles. And so there, that is an opportunity that we see out there. And, you know, a couple of, what is it, probably a month and a half ago, we spoke with UCF, and UCF is very interested as well in creating some form of connection. Basically, from, you know, from the, you know, the Oviedo area down to UCF, all the way down to the Creative Village, when it's gonna come up in a couple of years. So that's also, you know, a good opportunity that we see over there. And that is it for my presentation. I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
So the Aloma spur terminates in, in Winter Springs, basically.
Well, actually, that's a good one. Sorry, I actually, sort of, let's skip my mind a little bit. Let me go back. Because one of the things that we have found, unfortunately, let me go, this, this one is the closest map to the spur itself. So the spur, obviously, you have the map up close, you have the little rail line that goes Sanford Sunrail down Sanford International, down all the way to Winter Springs. The contract of sale, it says, this Aloma spur, which, that goes to Orlando Sanford International Airport. However, the remaining of the contract just states the Aloma spur. When you talk to anybody in CSX, FDOT, you make it sound, people talk to you as if the Aloma spur is from point A to point C. However, it seems that the contract itself was written where it's only from point A to point B. And I, we actually met with our attorneys this morning, and they'll be giving us their legal opinion about the matter, hopefully, by next week. But that is one of the, I guess, could be considered one of the biggest flaws in it, because obviously, the, one of the intents of this is there is some form of rail connectivity that could occur, or some, any type of multimodal connectivity that could occur between these, these 2 sections. And if point A to point B could be purchased for $10, but then the remaining could be purchased for 500 million, you know, $500 million, then that's a, that's a huge expense that could, that needs to be taken into account of. In addition, the spur itself, it's classified as an accepted trek, which by FRA standards, an accepted trek does not allow passenger rail. So that's another huge flaw. In order to be upgraded, it could be technically upgraded to a, to, to run passenger rail, it can technically, it could be upgraded to a Class 1. Usually, passenger rail gets run at 60 miles an hour in order to be efficient and convenient for people to basically be a competition to the, to the vehicle, to the motor vehicle. So for that, it needs to be at least a Class 3, and that takes massive quantities of money. So that's another issue that we have found through our study. Questions?
Any more? What, what is the long-term goal? The long-term goal, to get a loop around? Well, I mean, 'cause Gabby, you've heard me say this at Metro Plan many times. I mean, you know, Sunrail is nice, it's a choo-choo, it doesn't do us any good out here.
Right.
And, you know, even though Oviedo would, of course, support the implementation, and we'd like to see it be successful, until there's spurs coming to Winter Springs, Oviedo, going around, you're not gonna get a lot, any use-
Right.
-out here, and to, you know, end a spur in Winter Springs, or just dead-end it.
Right. Right now, this, from our side, this is technically just barely an existing conditions analysis. If FDOT wants to take it to the next level, that's when they will analyze not only, for example, running it from Sanford to, you know, down to Winter Springs, but is there some other form of multimodality that doesn't, is not just a commuter rail line that could be extended into Oviedo? On the other hand, on the other side as well, there are some partners that do not want some form of enhanced multimodality running through their cities. And so, the other, for example, an alternative analysis, or whatever next stop, next step FDOT wishes to, to do, might look at, okay, some form of rail connection down to 417, 417 to either, you know, GID, to the GID, and then hopping on 434 to run through your new downtown, or the other way of going directly through 417 all the way down to University Boulevard. So, the, the next step is, is up to FDOT to, to take the next, next step, but it's not just commuter rail. It's not, it, it, first of, I mean, yeah, no, it cannot be just commuter rail, because obviously, that's not gonna suffice what the needs of Oviedo are, so.
You know, it, it's a sprawling suburbia that we all live in right now, so folks are gonna be hard-pressed to give up their car.
Right, absolutely.
And, you know, like I said, it's the normal discussion once a month. I mean, if you have hour times that people have to wait for a bus, they're not gonna use it.
No, absolutely.
If you got that down to 15 minutes-
Or, or express buses, you know, in the city in, you know, York, they, you know, you'd have express buses that go from point A to B, you know, from UCF, from Research Park, you know, UCF, and then 2 stops in Oviedo.
Right.
That would be, you know.
The, the vision, Links Vision 2030 listed specifically an express bus that, but Seminole, they call it Seminole Way, but basically, it goes from Sanford through the 417 down to UCF. So, but it's, it's literally an express bus. You hop on Sanford, you get off of UCF. Now, that is great for those people that just need to go from point A to point B, but that is not, you know, that does not incite economic development for our local cities. So it is a balancing act of trying to find, okay, it, it's great that we want multimodality, that we wanna get their people faster, because it needs to be reliable, convenient, and compete against the automobile, but then at the same time, we wanna incite economic development within our local municipalities.
Any other questions?
Excellent.
We're good, Gabby.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
All right, I can, sorry, thank you.
Well, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess while Gabby packs up. If anybody has any questions for her, she has the maps behind us. And please pick her brain, and you can get an idea of what's going on globally, and that's what Metro Plan does all the time, every day. You know, they're just thinking, "Digger, at 100,000 feet." And, you know, next thing you're gonna have, little things in your car that are gonna know where you are at every moment, and toll you on every road, and so.
It's called your phone. It's called your phone, it's there already.
No, what were they, what was the name of that thing with the tolling? The, the mileage tolling?
Mile, BMT.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll, that'll be the next thing, so. They'll be charging you by how many miles you actually drive your car, rather than taxing you for your gasoline, so.
Soon as they take the tax off the gasoline.
They're gonna double it, actually. All right, 10-minute break, and then we'll come back over. All right, 10-minute break, and then we'll come back over. Good trip. We are on and we are back. All righty, we're going to reconvene the Oviedo City Council work session. It's about 20 after 6:00. For the record, we do have Councilman Schenck in attendance as well, so we do have a forum. At this time, our discussion moves on to review the amendments to the Land Development Code, the approval process, and the definition and standards for flags. Mr. Cobb, for this all-encompassing, exciting work session, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this
If anybody does fall asleep, we do not blame you. We will wake you when it's over.
Tonight we do
That includes you, Councilman Britton.
Thank you. Well, tonight we do have two topics for you to, to take a look at. One is working with flags. For about the past year, the staff and the city attorney have been working on ways to differentiate between flags and attention-getting devices, and they've come up with a plan that they would like to present to you before we bring it for formal adoption in a, in a few months. We also, tonight, are going to be talking about the Land Development Code revisions. Tonight, we're discussing the approval process. We reviewed the, both of these topics with each of you over the past week, and we want to thank you for taking the time to sit with us and give us your input regarding these two issues. We also, tonight, we'd like to just go over what we heard as the consensus of the, of the council. We want to make sure that we're getting it right, and to, then there's also a couple of items where we feel like that we may not have a definite consensus on, and we'd like to have a discussion with you so that as a group, we can move forward. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Correa, and let her, let her take you through the flags, and I believe Ms. Pierre will walk us through the, the approval process.
Are we going to do one at a time, Britton?
Yes, sir.
Attack flags first?
Flags first.
Okay. Thank you. Doctor?
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Britton. Thank you for coming to our 101 meeting. We had a very good set of discussions last week. And today, I'll go through quickly through the flags. I don't want anybody sleeping here, so I'll go quickly.
Flags are more exciting than process.
Exciting, okay, good. Sorry, Deborah.
Process is exciting.
But
Deborah, my full-sitting boss, he's giving you a presentation.
I am, I may. I'm here to wake her up. But for the flags, the ordinance is really ready. We just need to clarify what, some standards to be able to propose. The majority of you like the number, the maximum number to be four flags. We are fine with that. The height, there was no discussion. The maximum flag size, there were two options, 50 or 60. We are fine with both of them. The majority went to 60. And for the standards, we had, we offered also two options. One is to have just the maximum, maximum for the height, and the maximum, maximum for the size, and then another one that would give different layers. And four of you were fine with just the maximum. One proposed the layers. We are opening again for discussion if you would like to discuss. For us, whatever come from the decision today, we'll take forward to, with the ordinance.
Do you want us to attack each issue one, as we go along?
Yes, I think if, if you would like to, to discuss. It's really the, the size and the, and the standards, if they're going to be only the maximum, or if you would like to have the different layers.
Okay. What was the reasoning behind going with the?
With just the maximum.
Yeah, with either just the maximum or keeping everything in perspective?
Yeah, the, the only difference, one was proposed, is the proposal that Altamont Springs has, not the proposal, their signed code. And, and our proposal was to facilitate code enforcement, because it would be just, they wouldn't need to see the relationship between the poles' heights and the flag size. But we are fine either way. I mean, we can, that was
I'm sorry.
That was just a proposal to, to facilitate the code enforcement.
Let me, let me ask the question a different way. If we left it as the four, the four on the top of it, could somebody put a 60-foot flag on a 12-foot pole and engineer it and have it work?
Technically, they could. I don't know if they would be permitted, if the building permit would, if they would go through the process of building permit, and if that, if they could get that
That, that's not the question. The question is, could it be engineered to work?
They could, they could, yeah. If they could engineer, yes.
So if we don't have what's in red, in, as perspectives, you know, you could have a 20, 24-foot flag up to a 20-foot pole, you could have somebody go maximum on a 12-foot pole.
It could. I mean, it wouldn't make sense, but it could, yeah.
Could you put a, just break it down to a ratio, rather than this, and just say, there's a relationship between the height, height and the square footage, rather than, I mean, like a 40, you know, it's gotta be 40% of whatever, versus having the three different, I, I just, like I said, it, it becomes a, code-wise, I just think if you make, make
I think I recall asking that, that they wouldn't be able to do a flag that's out of proportion with the height of the pole, is what the mayor is
No, because we thought that you would have to engineer the pole to be able to support the flag. But I mean, yeah, technically, if you want to have a very heavy, you know, short pole and, and, and still have a, a large flag, technically, yes, you could. I mean, if you wouldn't make sense
I'll make it easier. It makes a little more, it makes a little more pride, the, the question is, it makes a little more problem for code enforcement. They would, then have to go out and measure certain things. Not a problem, it just adds that there might be instances. I, I'm fine with adopting it, to be honest with you. I really, that's not a killer with me. So I'm fine with adopting the Altamont Springs. Or if there's an easier way to make that number work, how to make that work, I, I'm fine with that also.
I think it's not also a kill for code enforcement.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it, so.
If you're comfortable with, with that
If the other two are fine with it, I, I'm a-okay with, again, and it fits in with the standards and, and how we want to present the new building codes, in that, you know, it has, there's a relationship, there's a relationship between the size of the flag and the flag pole and the building size. There should be relationships, you know, that go together. So I'm, I'm fine with that.
Are you okay with that, Keith? Knowing that somebody, the way it is, I mean, somebody could do a 12-foot pole with a 60-foot flag.
Yeah, he's still up
The, the flag pole, yes.
The flag pole, not the flag.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think there's common sense will tell you that it has to be proportioned. Proportion is the 35-foot pole to the 50-square-foot flag, and let's, let's ramble out, we'll say if it was a 40-foot pole and a 50-square-foot, if you went to a 20-foot pole, you'd have a 25-square-foot flag.
Right, well, that, that, that's what the bottom one accomplishes.
Yeah, but that's, that only accomplishes four. Just say it's a
Unless I said, there's a linear relationship, and if you could figure that, just say whatever the number is that linearly follows. That's all I was saying, is I'm good with, there's an easier way than having those three steps, to just saying, there's a relationship that goes together with the, you know, how much square footage and the height.
Tell them how high a pole is.
Right.
The elements gotta be in relationship.
Ronnie, is that, are you able to do that, Mike and Brian?
I, I, I think it's important to set a maximum height on the
Oh, there's a maximum height on the pole.
Yeah, we would need to have that. This is already
You don't want the pole to become the, the dominant feature.
No, no, you said that there's a maximum, so I think you just, but you can say, you know, 35 feet gives you whatever, and then just whatever that ratio is, just scale the ratio down. So if they have a 33-foot pole
But for us, if we have that, it's, this is already, there is already a ratio here.
I was just offering the alternative, like the council was just saying, here's the alternative, is just making it a one number, that here you go, it just has to be this ratio and it works, versus having a three steps. I don't care either way. I'm good with having a limit and a relationship size.
All right, there you go. So we want perspective built into the code, whether it's what you got or if you come up with something linear, a little bit more creative, that's okay.
You want the perspective.
I'll go back to the maximum flags, though, because that's me saying three. This is, we can have one lot, this is one property this could also apply to, not a multi...
Yes.
So you could have one property that has four flags sitting out in front.
That may have, yes.
And, and a whatever, and a banner, and it is, and it is that, and so that's why I was, you know, three flags to me is a, having three flags is a maximum to me, that you start, the clutter starts to build. So I, I, I like this.
And again, because it's a quantifiable number, there is always a possibility of deviations.
Right, they can, someone can ask for more, and ask for twelve if they wanted to, but I think you're sort of looking at the size, you know, that three becomes a number.
I said three or four, I couldn't care less.
You can do three if they want, four if they can pass four. I could care less.
I don't have a preference either. I think I said four just to give them, I think Altamont, I want to be better.
I want to be better, Altamont. I want to be better than Altamont.
Great, great, next issue.
Okay.
So...
Mayor, just, I did some quick math to go along with Mr. Schenck's ratio. If you set a sixty-square-foot flag on a thirty-five-foot pole, it would be a ratio of one point seven one square feet for linear for a pole.
Something like that. If you want to, I mean, if that makes sense to you, if it doesn't, you don't want to do it, then that's fine. Whatever's easier for Sean. I'm just offering, whatever's easier to Sean, it's fine.
I think this will be easier.
Whatever's easiest for staff.
That's all I...
Just keep everything in some sort of perspective.
Okay.
You know, because you will have the one guy who will figure out how to do a twelve-foot pole with a sixty-foot flag, and he'll have some kind of a wind tunnel going up the flag, flapping it, and, you know, who knows? Keep it in perspective.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's going to be, I'm assuming, well, yeah, every zoning district has maximum height anyway, so, would a residential home be able to put a thirty-five-foot flag pole?
Yes.
Really? Okay, cool.
Yes, a residential home would be thirty-five.
Nice. I don't know if the H.O.A. would let you do that, but okay. Is it sixty feet? Nice, you're the man.
Okay, for the approval process, we need today directions on this series of things. The architectural review, what would be the type of construction that a building needs architectural review, then the role of DRC, PZA, the role of hearing officer, and then also, we need directions on the cap, the Citizen of Awareness Participation Plan. If you would like us to customize something for Oviedo, or how do you feel about having the participation?
So we're going to walk through each item one at a time?
Yes, so I'm going to turn to Deborah now. She'll go for the process.
Thank you, Dr. Correa. Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, for allowing us to come here tonight and talk to you again about the process. We appreciate the 101 meetings that we conducted with each of you last week. We were able to gain and understand where the city council would like for us to go, and we really appreciate that. We believe we've reached consensus on some items, and then there's some items that we will still need your input on. The, we, one of the items that we believe we have a consensus on is that the existing process needs to change. So we're going to do away with the existing process. Another item that we believe we've reached consensus on is the architectural standards. And with the architectural standards, when polling each of you, and the question that we posed to you is, should the city adopt architectural standards for mixed-use, multifamily, industrial, townhomes, and public? So as you'll see, five, each one of you decided mixed use is something that we should have architectural standards for, multifamily is another. Two of you believe that it should only, we should have architectural standards for industrial. And then each one of you believe that townhomes is something that we should also have standards for, and only two believe public was something that we should have architectural standards for. And we want to just make sure that before we move forward with this is that it's still the city council's consensus on the following.
Thoughts?
And currently, the industrial and public, what's the status?
Architectural standards are not required.
Right, they're not there, right, okay.
Do we have any industrial zone left?
We do. Near, oh, Erie Drive, that area.
We have basically, yeah...
Probably asphalt, right.
We have basically four areas, the Erie Drive area, Tink Court, there's a parcel over on the west side of 426 across the street from it, and then Evans Street. Some industrial as well.
And by public, you mean the stuff we built.
It could be libraries, it could be schools, it could be churches, yeah.
I ain't telling them. I'm not telling God how to build a building.
That's what I just said. I think that's pretty much what I said to us. I'm kidding.
And I think, especially like with our, with our own buildings, we act as client. So I think we have more, more ability in working with our own designers there. The county, the question becomes, it's like if the county came in or if the feds came in and wanted to build a building, churches, or any other type of institutional type use came in, if you wanted to come in and meet these certain standards, that's the possibility. But, once again, we know what happened last time when we tried to exempt ourselves, so that would, that would be...
So it's either all in for public or all out for public? There's no...
I don't think there's a really...
There's no in-between?
Correct.
It can't be like a buffet and we just choose a couple of categories?
We could, but probably not the best advice is what you're saying.
I'm just asking.
So is the schools.
Some of the schools, some of the colleges.
Right. Again, you know, the county and the churches and, who do we want to?
I mean, if you look at the last three churches we've built in the city, they're all three very nice churches.
Name the three.
Antioch, First Baptist, and Most Precious Mon.
What about the fourth one that was built?
Roundabout.
Roundabout.
That was before.
South side of the roundabout.
South side of the roundabout.
Not bad.
Oh, yeah, the multifamily.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, so three out of four isn't bad.
Yeah. But it's a fellowship hall.
I'm okay with it, I agree.
I mean, I, Keith, do you have anything you'd like to add on, do you care either way?
No, I like, I'm okay with the way that...
The chart is, there you go.
Okay, great, great.
And I'm just going to add that we had a suggestion that we should also present to the city council, and the city council would approve, like a booklet with the approved, with examples of approved projects.
High-quality projects.
Yeah, high-quality projects, so that we can also, you know...
Encourage.
Encourage.
Features that would be...
That would be approved, right? Architecture that would be approved.
But what you're... No, what the suggestion was is, they break down the categories, however many categories they think they need. Let's assume it's fifteen categories, and they get twenty examples or twenty-five examples of higher-quality projects that fit into that category. We get out and sit here in a workshop one night with our little clickers, let them go by, get the top ten, and let them make a booklet, so when somebody comes in and says...
Don't we have that for the office system?
No.
Carrests and...
We got stick drawings.
Features on, about windows and...
We have standards, but this would be like a graphic, you know, renderings showing...
Somebody comes in, they can hand them the booklet and say, oh, you want to build a X.
Like the visual preference survey. Well, you've seen the visual preference survey, that, it would be something similar to the visual preference survey.
They did do the visual preference survey with you, and they did, they also...
Oh, yeah, you could just send it out, you can send it out to us as a visual preference survey, we could do it at our homes. And then you could just tally it all, and you don't.
Now, in your downtown master plan, you do have some, some recommendations, like for colors and ideas, but we've never really gone into the level of detail to say, you know, this is what works.
No flat windows, you had to have dimensions.
We wrote them out. We didn't do pictures, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have pictures, but we had standards and...
Right, there are standards, yes, but we've never gone out and graphically shown people. I mean, in our current architectural standards, we do have some graphics, but they're not of the quality like what was recommended in last week, where we go out and actually look for things that, that reflect what we want to achieve, and then put that in a booklet, bring it to council, let you all bless it, and then have it such that if we find other things to bring to you, bring those things to you and say, would you want to add this to your booklet, you know?
And we would hand those to the developers who come and let them know that this is the minimum that we would accept.
In preamps, I mean, we could also use that in preamps.
But we're not going to prescribe building materials.
Our code doesn't do that currently. That's an area that we need to improve on.
The materials will be dictated by compliance with the structure.
Right, yeah.
And the visual pictures will give them an idea, you know, because we tend to, when things come into us, we tend to like things that have a mixture of materials, stucco, stack stone, or, you know, brick and stucco, or, so that way, they can give them a booklet and say, you know, before you bring that architectural rendering to us and we send it to them, this is the minimum.
No, I think it's an easier way to say, well, that's what the council is looking for, that kind of, you know, quality in architecture. So I think it would be a good thing.
And an interesting way that we can do it is, we can do it by use. So if someone comes in and says, they want to build a retail, we can pull out pictures of retail and say, here's, here's some examples that work. What can we do in office book? Lonnie, would we paint ourselves in a pool if we, someone came in and said they wanted to do retail, and we show them a booklet, say, this is what we like, and they said, well, look it down at Napa, I want to build it like that?
Well, the book is going to reflect the code. The book isn't the code. The book is, is demonstrative evidence is that what the city has approved, what the city's code looks like when it's done right.
I think, I think what Keith was asking, if I may, I think he was worried about grandfathered in, is somebody going to say, well, you know, you let them build that twenty years ago, but that's not the current code now, so you can't do it.
That does say, you can change your code any time. The fact that folks did something different prior to...
What will get interesting is when someone comes in and meets the minimum code, but it doesn't necessarily, you can't really find it through all the pictures. You might be able to find it, find one piece here and one piece there, but you don't, there's no one picture that you can absolutely go to and say, here it is. You know, that's when it's going to get interesting.
Well, isn't the real issue going to be like that case that you find out before, you meet the standards, you meet all the codes, you don't look anything like you did before, which is just that, what is it there?
Oh, yeah, the hamburger joint, the hamburger place.
The one that you told me, and this is how he said it to me, it's the most interesting building in the world, Dominic, you'll hate it.
Yeah, they build in, it's a, it's a hamburger place, and that's what it is. They build in the hamburger, the french fries, the milkshake into the architecture, is what they, and their architect has won awards all over the world with this little building. And I just told him, you'll hate it.
Like a swirly top ice cream cone, similar.
But, but, but it could avoid situations where we have folks skirting the edge of the code, as we have in a certain road in the city by a church, that, you know, you all struggle and fight, and, you know, they're insisting they're meeting it, but then you can go to the book and say, no, you're really not.
Because if you, if you did implement the code, it would look like this, you don't look like this, right?
Exactly. Just to give them...
Okay, that could be nice.
Just, just to make sure I got everything right, we would like us to improve the architectural standards for commercial and office that we already have, but we would like to develop architectural standards for mixed-use, multifamily, townhomes.
Yes.
And not worry about industrial.
Industrial brings jobs, you know, it's usually tucked away back into the industrial area. And I'm sure there's standards where they have to fence it in, they can't have, they're grabbing pits open to the street view, and aren't we going through that right now with the granite guy that wants to move across the street? Right, he's going to have to change that whole yard and kind of fence it in and...
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's...
It's outdoors.
Yeah, it's about outdoors stories, that's what it's about.
Okay, that sounds like you've got three yeses.
Great, great.
And the booklet sounded like it was a complete thumbs up.
Great, okay, so now we're going to go to the approval process table. You have a bigger version?
It's here, yeah.
Oh, that is much better.
Yeah. Okay, so the highlighted applications, highlighted yellow applications are the ones that we believe we've got consensus on from the city council. So we'll go straight to the ones where we have consensus, and the ones where we do not have consensus, we will need to go back and gather your thoughts on those.
Those are the ones that are in brown?
The ones that we don't have consensus are in white and brown.
That's a lot of non-consensus.
Exactly. So I was thinking, oh, darn, I was hoping it was the other way.
Yeah, I was hoping it was the other way.
No, some of, some of the members wanted to have time to think about which process they wanted to go with, so...
I was one, but I didn't think I had that many.
Okay, so...
I don't think I was that far off, which, I didn't think I was. Oh, wait, I was, I remember where. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll go with the site development orders, and those are the commercial and also the multifamily ones. So we believe we have consensus to go with the hearing officer approval process with that one. And let me know if I'm not correct on that.
And that's the SDO private project, which one is that?
It's a SDO private project.
Right, okay.
Right, but above twenty percent deviation is coming to us.
Yes.
Hearing officer becomes recommending, final authority rests with us, where in the past, it was only, it was thirty percent coming to us.
Correct.
Yes, actually, it was twenty-one percent.
Twenty-one percent over.
Twenty-one percent over came to you, to you all, and then thirty percent and over required a development agreement, so we took the development agreement away.
So basically, ten percent or less would still be staff review, or staff approval. Eleven to twenty percent would be approved by the hearing officer, and then twenty-one, above twenty percent with the hearing officer would provide a recommendation, and the city council would be trying to report.
All architectural features are reviewed by us?
Still, yes.
All right, so this, this deviation would only be setback to staff?
Yes. It's for the, this is for the site itself. It could be, it could be the buffer, yeah, the, things of that nature. Yeah, the architectural plans, all of them are still going to city council, in both the work session and the hearing officer. So the hearing officer is what we believe we had consensus on, which would, you all still review the architectural plans.
Now, the hearing officer, that if we do end up going this way, does the council just bless us? Are we going to use a different hearing officer, somebody more land use-oriented, or have we not even thought that far down the line yet?
We haven't discussed it. Lonnie may have more information on it.
What I'm going for, the, the, the existing contract, which is I have called, which allows Kasani additional duties to Melton Chase, and I have been saying that she was interested. Well, it's not popping into her, and I called her after the last 101 session, said I've been saying that you're interested, and she said, yeah.
She has a land development background.
Oh, like she's chairman of the youth center for every company out there.
I was just curious, what do you have on? It's better if you just make, I think, just personally make recommendations to us and we stay out of, you know, this is who we like, this is who we like, because then we could be judges bias. You know, I'd rather you guys just pick somebody and say, this is the professional that comes from you, Lonnie, and we just bless it.
My revelation was, I look at this stuff and I think I need a civil engineer in there that's more of a lawyer type. So she's got the background.
Well, and it's based on evidence, that's what they're, you know, it's, it's going to be evidentiary, that staff's going to be giving, here's what, you know, they believe, and here's why the decision they've came to, and it's going to have to, the other person's going to have to come in and say why they feel it should be different. So it's going to be more evidentiary.
All right, looks like you have consensus there.
And one thing, counsel, I just want to make, very important, all of this, on your current process, the architectural plans can be submitted at site development or at building permit. Under this proposed process, what will happen is, is that the architectural plans will be required to be submitted at site development plan.
Right.
Right up front.
Right up front, and then the site development order will not be issued until the city council approves the architectural elevation.
And those elevations are going to come through as it's envisioned currently, as a consent agenda item. Council will have the ability to review it, pull it, if one member has a question on it, and if everybody says aye on the consent agenda, off they go. Is that what you're, you're all envisioning? Or are you envisioning a separate public, because I really don't want any separate public hearings.
No. We think that would expedite everything. We think that would.
And also the ideology is to get the architect and the engineer working together from the beginning. That's part of it too, is that kind of almost assures, but pretty much puts them hand in hand from the beginning, which will help as the road continues on down, that we don't have, the architect envisioned this and the engineer changed it to that, and we blessed this, but now it became something different.
And I think we're all on the same page, but just to say it out loud, you know, I think when I heard all five of us, and if, guys, if I'm speaking wrongly, let me know, but what I thought I heard all five of us say was that we want to help empower you at the beginning, that we want to be able to give you the process in order to help steer and upgrade the standards by having us adopt and approve them, but we don't want, you know, 20 public hearings editor agendas, you know, so just dump them in.
We agree.
Okay. All right, good. I just, just along the same. I don't want to go back to, you know, what we used to do 12 years ago where, well, Brian was here, I mean, every little thing was a public hearing on our agenda, and our agenda books, well, you remember, Ethan, you remember, I mean, the agenda books would be this thick for LPA. That might sit down.
The thing, and Lonnie, Lonnie made a good point the other day. We're required to provide public comment, and we do that, we provide public comment before we do any business other than minutes. So if it's on the consent agenda, there will be a public comment section beforehand. And so if someone wants to provide public comment on a consent agenda item, they will just make that during the public comment portion. That's correct.
Is that spelled out, let's take it one step further, you know, while we're, while we're, you know, covered on you-know-what's. Is that spelled out on the agenda packs that get put out there? I mean, maybe, maybe we just need to spell it out, that, you know, the items on consent are, you know, general consent for council, if you have a comment on one of them, you know, please make it during public comment. That way people know, because most folks coming into our chamber, as we know, aren't aware of the process we are, because we do it every day. You know, and then we give folks, our council is especially very good at giving folks some latitude, like on resolutions where if you don't write it, you can't speak. I mean, we never hold them to that, but I think if we spell that out, so we just CYA, you know, CYA, it might be good.
I think so, and that's, you know, one of the things we generally during the meetings said that public comment is for anything not on the agenda. And so we'll have to, that's one of the things that we'll have to get into a habit of saying that, and even on our agenda forum, we can set and say that anything on our agenda or on consent agenda.
I think I would just point out that consent is just what it is, you know, however you briefly, I mean, it doesn't have to be, don't Brianize it, please, it would be four pages. Just brief little paragraph. Barbara, you know, anything brief, you know, items on the consent are approved all at once. You know, if you have any comment on any item, do so during public comment.
That's all, there you go. Oh, no problem, thank you.
It'll be four pages, it'll go through 12 committees. Lonnie will work on it all weekend from Friday till Monday morning. All right, what's next, ladies?
Okay, so then we have, if you turn the page, building permit process.
Miss Hare, if I could, one thing, if you look at the bottom of the first page, you'll see in the final flat reply, I believe we did have consensus on that one, that that process would stay the same, that it'll go directly from the staff to the council, like it does now. So I think that one was one that we did, I think we did good.
Well, let me just ask real quick. Does anybody want to change final plan? Anyone care?
Okay, so let's look at the.
He wants to start filling in some dots, he was like playing bingo.
So let's look at the building permit applications, and we believe.
I 11.
Oh, no.
Did I just win a cruise?
We believe we have consent on this one as well, so it would be staff approval of anything less than 10%. 11 to 20% would be the hearing officer. Again, we're deleting any DRC out of the process.
Right, that's where that used to go. When you're saying, for folks who might be watching or listening at home, or folks that are here, when you're saying hearing officer, that used to be a stop at DRC.
Yes.
So now rather than staff all coming together once again to have a public hearing with minutes and this and that.
Same people.
The same people are going to review the project, same people are going to make comments on the project. You're just all going to present it to the professional who will make the final decision.
Exactly, exactly. You're exactly right. So we have the 11 to 20%, which is, we have today, well, proposed as the hearing officer. And then the 20% and up, we have the hearing officer as well. The work session, hearing officer is the final approval on this one.
For 20% and up?
20% and up for building permits.
What's going?
Okay, so what we had before was the, for building permits, the recommending, the land use administrator was the recommending body for that one.
Miss Hare, let me take.
I got it. Well, you can go ahead, I'll add in on that one.
Basically, with, with what we call development permits in the land development, if it's compliant up to 10%, the staff can approve it. From 10% up to, or from 11% to 20%, the government review committee could approve.
Give me an example of what was fitted to this counter.
Boat dock, fence, designs, setbacks on single-family homes, those types of things.
Pools.
Pools, yeah, screen enclosures.
Code enforcement.
Uh, yes.
A lot of that's code enforcement.
No, 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 BOA.
BOA stuff, yes.
I said code, but I meant BOA stuff.
BOA stuff, yes. But a lot of them are initiated by code enforcement.
That's why.
Those are the primary things. Now, here's where it gets a little different. For commercial projects, for the 11 to 20%, I believe that it was going, it goes from the DRC to city council. But for the, like I said, the more of those residential type products, BOA type projects, those go to the PZA currently. And so what we're, what we thought was the consensus was, was that up to 10% would stick with the staff, and then 11% and above would go to the hearing officer. Once again, this is all based on that we're not going to do development agreements.
Right, so then this way, just clear concise code and PZA members don't have to be bogged down like BOA members used to get.
Exactly.
Over six inches.
Correct.
Right.
And eight inches and 12 inches.
And again, your appeals is to us.
Yes.
Your appeal are to us, so if they go to the hearing officer, they get the hearing, they're not happy with the results, they can always appeal to us.
Well, I think that would streamline PZA.
What am I on this party talking about?
It's the highlighted area, highlighted in yellow.
The yellow stuff.
Talking about the yellows.
Yeah.
I thought we were in consensus with the yellows.
We are.
We, we're just going over what you all are in consensus. There was consensus to go with the hearing officer approval process, so is that still the same?
So I'm reading 11 to 20%, A for hearing officer, A for PZA?
Well, if we were going with the city council work session, then it would have been the PZA who would have been the final approving authority, because the city council at that time, when we were going for our work sessions, didn't want to see those items like the signs and the setbacks and boat docks. So we were going to have PZA as a final approving authority on it. With the hearing officer review, the hearing officer would now become the final approving authority.
That's why they're in yellow. I thought so, but I wasn't. That's why they're in yellow, okay, yeah.
And now it would be just one category, right?
Yeah.
11, 11 and up, above and up, yeah.
I think that streamlines the entire process.
It does.
It seems to be working extraordinarily well for code enforcement, so let's just hope that that success will carry over on these small items. Because these are the mundane items that it becomes neighbor against neighbor, you know, those who have sat on BOA or LPA or those boards in the past that used to do those things, I mean, it's mind-numbing, you know, for two feet. Maybe you get some members who get it, and then you get some members who, not that they don't get it, they just want to work it through and you spend hours on something that should take five minutes.
So that's consensus. Great. Okay, so we're going to start over to the beginning, and I wanted to point out some of the items that the PZA.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because we can really simplify the soul process.
Okay.
Do you remember what the three of us wanted and just go down and boom, boom, boom? I just.
I can't. Okay, so do you all, did you all do your homework?
Some of you said that you'd like to think of.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
So we don't have.
All right.
We don't have.
That's okay, let's, let's run through them.
Roll.
And we'll keep everything rolling.
Okay. Okay, so some of the items that I wanted to point out to you in the beginning, which we don't need your decision on, but we wanted to make sure that you all understand that PZA is still heavily involved in the process. So if you look at the first item, which is a comprehensive plan amendment, they are still involved with the process. You'll see it's land use administrator, we review it, we have eliminated DRC in each one of the items. PZA has a recommending role in the comprehensive plan amendments, and they will maintain that role in comprehensive plan amendments with the, each process. City council has the final approving authority on each one of those items, so you have the comprehensive plan amendments, amendments to the land development code, amendments to the official zoning map, DRIs, planned unit developments, that includes zoning map amendments, PUDs with statutory development agreements, statutory development agreements and amendments, preliminary subdivision plans, and special exception use order.
All right, so walk us through the process with that, all of those categories. Where does it start, where does it end?
So you've got existing work session and hearing officer, so existing is the way we do it now?
Uh-huh, the existing, the existing is what, what takes place today. So with the comprehensive plan amendment, the existing is, we take the application to DRC for a recommendation, DRC is just the recommending body, and then we take it forward to, to PZA. If you look at the existing column under PZA, they are a recommending body and they, we, DRC and PZA make a recommendation to city council, and under the existing, under city council, you all are the adopting agency for.
So just tell us, what is the new process you want to do for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items?
All you did is just get DRC out.
Yes, we, we remove DRC.
So the hearing officer is going to make a recommendation.
There is no hearing officer.
There is no hearing officer.
On all of those.
That's for special.
Okay, so it's going to go right to PZA to make a recommendation, then come to us for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Special exception.
Because I see, you know, what's confusing is I see hearing officer with an A on the side. Should I cross all that off?
Yeah, I'll.
Yes.
Okay, so just.
That's what I'm trying to.
Okay.
Yes, no.
All right.
There, there were two.
Can I make a clarification?
Please.
But the, the.
I already crossed it off, so if it's got to come back, it can.
No, when you have the three columns, you have the existing process, the work session that you looked, and then when you see hearing officer, actually, this is the proposed process with a hearing officer.
Now, why nobody could do the end here, there is city council.
I know, but that's the same. It's a proposing, the proposing process with the hearing officer, still the city council is the one approving.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, city council is still the one approving.
Yeah, that's why, that's why the approval in this, it's not that the hearing officer is approving. It's that the process proposed with the hearing officer, city council, which is the one here, it's still the approval body. So the existing, you are the approval body, the org session, you are still the approval body, and even with the proposed process with the hearing officer, you are still the approval body. So what's mixing, what's making you think that it's the hearing officer? Because I think that we should, maybe we should have put proposed process with hearing officer.
The title is public hearing, yeah. The ti, you'll have to look at the titles, like each title has a, each process has a title. Like the DRC hearing officer.
We should have put, instead of hearing officer, here, the proposed process. The proposed process would.
Let me ask this, we're going to keep. In the work session, let's say all of them, if I go under PZA, it looks like existing is the same as the work session. Is that right? Let me ask this, if we go to the proposed hearing officer proposal over on the right side, does that mean all of that stuff that PZA does goes away?
If you were to, if you were to place, you see where the hearing officer title is?
I do.
Okay, so if you were to place R in that hearing officer title, then what PZA would do would go away.
Okay, so there's nothing in there, so.
The only thing that, that is there is for the special exception use order, which we will discuss next.
Okay, so.
Mr. Britton, this is, let me look a little bit.
The table's just confusing.
The table's confusing.
It's, everything stays the same, except the DRC goes away.
The DRC goes away, yes.
Okay, but on the right-hand side.
I get it, yeah, and what we, like I said, what we were trying to show is that city council is the approving authority no matter what.
That's all right. We left, we left our planner hats at home, so we don't understand the chart. Bob, do you understand the chart?
The, the planning, the planning zone and appeals board is your designated local planning agency, okay? That's a statutory designation, okay, by statute. For the hearing officer to serve in this role, we would have to designate the hearing officer as the local planning agency. Now, statute allows you to do that. You can designate yourself, you can designate the PZA, you can designate the hearing officer, you can designate staff. But what we're trying, what we, if you look at those top ones, you said, all the ones on the top above development applications, if you took all of those. Okay, what we're recommending, at least, and if I'm incorrect, Miss Hare can correct me, but if you look at cop plans, land development code, which is the second one, official zoning map, development of regional impact, PUD zoning map amendment. On those, our recommendation is that it go to staff, go to PZA for a public hearing where they would make a recommendation, and then go to city council, okay? Now, if you look at the next ones, where you have a PUD with statutory development agreement and statutory development agreement slash amendment, okay? On that one, you have some choices. In the statutes, you have a choice. It says that the local governing body can conduct two public hearings, or is required to conduct two public hearings. And it says, at the local governing body's option, one of the public hearings can be with the local planning agency, okay? And so what we, what we've said is, is that we don't think you should designate the hearing officer as your local planning agency. So the hearing officer alternative is often, we wouldn't recommend that, okay? So now, with the zone, with the PUD with statutory DA and statutory development agreement slash amendment, what we would like to know is, would you like to maintain the current structure of a public hearing with PZA and a public hearing with city council, or would you like to do two public hearings with city council?
I'd like to see PZA.
See PZA, okay, so that's good there. Let me just write that down real quick.
It becomes a different sounding board for not only the residents that are, might come in to speak to it, but it also gives you a different perspective from seven citizens as to what they recommend. Now, I know that they'll stand up and say that we never listen to anything that they recommend, but that isn't true.
And at, and at the risk, and then we talked about, about hearing officer being going to be a fact-finder with a background in that, that could also act as that filter, perhaps, perhaps about the, about the. perhaps about the, about the nominated or, or private citizens that we should be nominating. One thing to remember is, through all these hearings are deals, right?
Yeah.
And a hearing officer doesn't make.
No, no, I, it.
Right, now.
In my, these nine, in my opinion, if it streamlines it, because I think, I kind of hear where it's all going. PZA, City Council. Public hearing, public hearing.
If I could ask one, just one item.
Okay, great, good.
I felt like, I felt like we had, I felt like we had consensus on the special exceptions, that that would still keep this process current, the current process with PZA and City Council. Preliminary subdivision plans, this is a different animal. This isn't negotiated, okay? The current process for preliminary subdivision plans is that it goes to DRC, and then it goes to City Council, is that correct? Is this on PSPs?
It goes to, it goes to PZA and then City Council.
So it goes DRC, PZA, and City Council. And so the question on the preliminary subdivision plan is, would you prefer to be like, with your site development orders and do the hearing officer, City Council route? Or do you want to maintain that PZA, City Council route? Because this is a more technical, PSPs are more technical, they're not legislative. And so that's, that, that was, at least in my mind, it was a question I had. I, I didn't get a clear consensus in the end.
Well, let me ask a question. What we're doing, is it working or not working?
It works.
PSPs.
Then just leave it alone. You know, I, I, I think unburdening them with, you know, setbacks and, you know, all that little nitpicky stuff that none of us likes to sit down there and debate is a great idea. I think that, you know, as far as these steps of public hearings, I mean, you know, and I think I had mentioned this when we sat down, I mean, the two-step process, the two different boards, I, I think it's good that it goes to another, another board, the folks get to, who are going to speak against it, you know, they, they become like the trial. You know, and then the City Council has a little bit better idea of, A, what to expect, or B, maybe some of the items get worked out by the applicant, because they're getting sounded out at the PZA before they get to us. So, I mean, that's just my personal.
Do we get a lot of PSPs? Do we, do we get a lot of PSPs?
We're subdivisions.
Yeah, subdivisions. No, we're seeing a ton while we do, proceeding more than we're.
Well, we've only done two in the last couple of years, my recollection.
Dwight sat off.
Right. And, uh, up on Oklahoma, Oklahoma. So, but all the rest.
If we see, if we see a change, we can always change it and change that one thing.
Dwight sat off, so.
You know, we can, we can hit that single one out if we need to, otherwise, to me, it's, I, I'd keep it the same.
PZA amendments.
Same as with the special exceptions.
Same with special exceptions, yeah, I'm sorry. Not the same as, as it is, we're saying.
Annexation petitions, there's no change with that. It goes from staff straight to City Council. PUDs with non-statutory development agreements, um, those go before, um, DRC today. With, it also goes to PZA for recommendation, and then City Council for adoption.
So all you're doing is replacing DRC with hearing officer as a recommending person for that process.
We can, the question is whether or not we want to replace PZA. With that, we have eliminated DRC. DRC is eliminated. Do we want to re, do we want to replace PZA with a hearing officer?
In other words, you want to talk about non-statutory development agreements?
Yes.
So with the non-statutory development, the question becomes, there's two choices. As far as you come up with a different choice, but we come up with two choices. One is to have it go from staff to the PZA to the City Council, which is a little bit more in line with what you currently do. And then, or staff to the hearing officer to the City Council.
What, what do we count? Does it stop with DRC?
Currently, it goes to, for non-statutory development agreements.
Yes.
It goes everybody, DRC, PZA. Now, only things that Mr. Britton said is very important, that it's negotiated.
This is a deal.
The hearing officer is not going to be someone who negotiates.
So then when it goes to PZA and then does.
I'm going to PZA, exactly what Lonnie said.
So we're just eliminate DRC?
Eliminate DRC currently, and no hearing officer, just.
Okay. Okay. And then skip the site development orders, and then we have the city projects. And currently, there's no change.
I'm sorry, I went back, non-statutory, that's going to be the same.
Same.
That's with the amendments, those are amendments to the non-statutory development agreement.
You skipped over it, and you just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it.
Okay.
There is one question I would like to ask the council. If you look at the top of page two, you see where it says, Esteban, New Downtown Zoning District. You know, currently, the New Downtown Zoning District, all of the authority lies with the Land Use Administrator.
No, no, it's.
Do you wish for us to make, no matter what zoning district you're in, everybody follows the same rules? Would that be the case to come around?
Ten seconds to think about that.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just, we got one more thing, we're going to get to that in a minute, so. We're primed, that's a good priming question to make us think for a second.
Now, the downtown district, that is not only.
That's not only that.
The, you know, on the park, that would be all the way up to the historic.
Basically, no, actually, it's two zoning districts that, that where this lies. It's in the downtown village core, which is a bit on the park primarily, with a couple of project parcels around it. And then there's the New Downtown Zoning District, which stretches up Upper Beadle Boulevard, almost to the gym, and then a little bit up, uh, still south of Palencia. Those two zoning districts is where the Land Use Administrator has the authority. Everything else within the downtown, just like in the old downtown, like you mentioned, Mayor, that follows the regular process. So it's really those two zoning districts that we've got it, so.
Okay. Um, so then you have the site development orders, which are city projects, and there are no changes recommended to that. Today, it's, if it's compliant, it's issued by staff, um, ten, compliant to less than 10% staff. Eleven to 20%, it's DRC. Um, 21 to 30%, DRC is the recommending body, which we're deleting that. And it's going to City Council, it goes directly to City Council.
You're still going to have DRC for 21% and above on.
No, no. It would just go directly to City Council.
It's right up between 11 and 20, you said, DRC.
Yeah. I'm sorry, so 11, 11% and up goes directly to City Council.
11% and up goes to DRC, straight to City Council.
So we're getting ready to, 21 to 30% is just 11% and up.
Right.
Those are city projects.
Okay, yep, they're going to come anyway, yep, I'm good.
Okay, next.
You good?
Okay, non-statutory subdivisions, you're looking at your lot splits. And today, if it's compliant, then it's, um, staff level approval on that. And then if you go to the next page, non-statutory development agreements, which are your lot splits, if there are any deviations associated with it today, it goes to DRC. And so since we're eliminating DRC, we're proposing that it goes to, um, the hearing officer.
Okay, so the only thing we're, we're changing is, it used to go to DRC for approval, now since DRC is eliminated, it's going to the hearing officer.
Yes. There's consensus for that. Okay, then you have your downtown districts. This is your, um, site development orders for, um, your downtown districts. Today, all of them are approved by the Land Use Administrator. And so, um, zero to 10%, it will still be approved by the Land Use Administrator. 11 to 20% would be your hearing officer. And then your, um, I'm going to skip over eminent domain, there's no changes proposed to that. It's, that's Land Use Administrator. And then your downtown district, anything over 20%, for, would go to your hearing officer as a recommendation, and then to City Council as, um, approval. And that is something that I will need your, uh, consensus on.
Because currently, Land Use Administrator does everything. Do you find that to be cumbersome and an issue, Brian?
So far, it's not. It's one of those where, where, as you all have seen, there's issues that I feel that you need to be involved in, I bring it here.
Anyway.
Anyway. And it is not something where I've asked for your approval, I've always just asked for consensus. We're just curious if you would like us to make that follow the same process today, by the way.
What levels have you been, have we been, when you feel comfortable coming in now? So we're, we're talking percentages, so kind of where are you?
Yeah. If you remember back, we, we had a work session in, uh, the Park Place Apartments, we needed to have a sign that was about 200% deviation. Uh, the, um, some of the monuments signs out there are larger than, you know, most of them have been over the 30% mark. I, usually, I've been comfortable with anything below 30%, but, uh, if it's above 30%, then that's operating under the existing process, it would become council anyway.
All right, so this would make you, on the 20% or above, more comfortable if we go hearing officer recommendation up to us?
I think what I would recommend is that you not have a special system for them, that you just let, let them follow along like everybody else. So that if it's zero to 10, the staff can handle it, 11 to 20, let the hearing officer handle it. About 20, come to council.
I, I don't wish, but you can always change it if it doesn't work. I mean, I, I, I kind of like the.
I would keep the zero to 10 Land Use Administrator. Where would, 11 to 20 would form, would go then to?
Hearing officer.
Hearing officer.
Instead of in the past, it was just Land Use Administrator.
Right. Oh, no, yeah, everything, yeah, I'm just. So zero, zero to 10, I would say, I, I'm, I'm more comfortable. It hasn't been a burden for us yet. The idea, I, you know, the ideology was to cat, to have this thing just roll. Set thing up so that everything can roll. I, I don't think that's the, the bottleneck at this point, I don't think. I, I think we're seeing other things that, and, and the possibility may be that there are going to be pressures because of that change. It's not a matter of, hey, this thing's just rolling, 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 turning, turning, and we've got to, um, approve, 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 and have just one person. And that was the ideology. I'm also not, no offense to you, and it's not related to you. You're doing a wonderful job, you, you do bring us forth when you feel there is a problem. Going forward, and, and hopefully you're here forever, but I've got to look at the bigger picture and say, if you're not. And say, I, I look at the, at the chair, not the person sitting in it, and say, I don't know that I'm as comfortable as I was when I first, when we first made that decision, saying, yeah, Land Use Administrator can do it all. I do like 10%, I, I didn't say 20%. You know?
Can I give you a for instance?
Yeah.
You've given us consensus tonight that all architectural plans approved by council. You've given us consensus tonight that, um, you want architectural plans for townhomes, multi-family, I mean, architectural standards for townhomes and multi-family, okay? You currently do not have architectural standards for townhomes and multi-family. You currently do not have authority over any architectural plans for townhomes and multi-family in this zone district. You've given that to the Land Use Administrator. Now, I've been prudent so far. There's going to be people out there in the coming parcels, they're going to not want me to do that prudent.
Right, and that, that's my concern.
Okay, so that's the reason, the reason I said, why don't you just make them do the same process that everybody else does? Because then, that you get to have that input on the new downtown.
So they'll have to follow the exact same process, submit their architectural.
Yes.
Drawings up front.
Yes, and you would have to bless them before their development orders issue. That's the reason I'm asking, because I mean.
The only thing that I have a concern with, help me overcome my fear. That area is, the vision of the area is important. The Land Use Administrator answers to the council on a daily basis. So, and the Land Use Administrator understands the visions. And the Land Use Administrator is going to be very prudent in decisions. Or the Land Use Administrator will turn around, bring it up, my fear at that 11 to 20, you turn it over to the hearing officer, and now you've just turned the center of town, which is the ground jewel, into the rest of town. So how do we?
I agree with that statement.
How, how, how do we avoid, I have more faith in the Land Use Administrator, no matter who the person is sitting in that chair, the person in that chair is those five people. You know, things start getting approved, but those five people don't like, well, there's a remedy to it.
And that's where I, I, I agree with that.
I, I, that, that's where my fear becomes with applying the, I don't mind applying the, the same process to it, but I don't like the idea that a hearing officer's going to prove anything. Do the, you know, it's got to be all us, or somewhere along the line, it's got to be whoever sits in that chair.
Could I, could I offer this as, as an alternative?
Yeah.
Since we have a different process for it anyway. What if, if it's compliant up to 10%, hearing officer, I mean, the Land Use Administrator has the approval authority, however, council approves the architecture? Okay? 11% above deviation, City Council approves everything.
Okay.
And then the architectural drawing, still comfortable?
Either way, we can do it.
I, I just feel uncomfortable with hearing officer.
And that's, I was uncomfortable with that, and that's, I was comfortable giving you the 10%. I just, I was uncomfortable with hearing officer.
Okay.
That, we just raised one issue, and, and that's about the timing of the, if we are going to approve this process before the Land Development Code rewrite, then any, you know, uh, you will see a lot of deviations for, for Beadle on the Park, I mean, City Council. Because Article Six, as it is now, it was planned for a different project, for a different vision, in a sense, and it's, we, we have been having a lot of deviations for the, um, what has been built right now, because it doesn't necessarily match, so.
But guess what? If they got to come to us, they'll have less deviations going forward.
Well, it might help smooth out that part.
Right, right now, they're taking, with all due respect, and it's not that they're taking advantage, it's just that they're equitably working the system, which I would do as well. Now you just took that, took that away, and now you have to answer it to us. It changes the conversation. You all know that. I mean, you know, once you say to them, you have to go to City Council, doesn't your conversation with whomever it may be usually change, doesn't?
They rethink it.
Compromise, all of a sudden change, doesn't, you know, you don't want me to send it into the five of them.
They start complying.
So I think by, by telling everybody that, you know what, up to 10% deviation, which is, you know, we'll get you right through the process, you do that vision, you're in.
And we want that to be as close to that vision as possible.
You go, you go 10.5, you're going to them, or 11.5.
Either way, they're still going to end up with the, the architectural, the way it is going to be.
Now, is this zoning in progress, Lonnie, where things stop? Process changes, I mean, is this?
If, if you reach consensus, uh, you, you could implement zoning in progress. I mean, zoning in progress is an optional thing.
Okay. How quickly can this be brought to us?
Do they need to declare zoning in progress, or?
That's what I'm, that's why, depends upon how fir, it's basically how firm a consensus is. We're going in the NACCA's code that's zoning in progress, but we're thinking about that, because that's different.
Does the development agreement have to be changed in order to change the approval process?
No, the development agreement does not address approval process, it only addresses their requirements.
Okay. All right, what's next?
I like that, you, you comfortable?
Yeah, I'm going to ask for you maybe tomorrow to clean this up and just put As or Rs where we agree to.
I, I think probably the thing to do is just to send you out this table with what you decide.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I think this might be a good point tonight, and I'm not arguing for anything, I just want to present a mission. And that is, and sort of the flip of what you just did. And that is going back to the preliminary subdivision plans, going, staying at P and Z, PZA as opposed to a hearing officer. My experience has been, first of all, y'all do a good job. A plant isn't entitled to that. Y'all did a good job when people come before you with a plant. It's their title to distill a pain concession that you might not otherwise get. Y'all know that. But my concern is, and I have no offense to planning boards throughout the world, but my, my, my experience is, sometimes people will come to a planning board. will come to a planning board and present issues, and then that same issue will be presented to the city council or city commissioner, county commissioner, and you feel constrained because it is an entitled document, and there's certain things you can't do, and yet the comment phone paper opponent will be, well, they listen to me at the planning board, why can't you do the same thing? As opposed to getting the true recommendation that this is, applies with the code, you see what I'm saying?
And what's that on?
Preliminary subdivision.
You talked about running that risk, it's kind of a trade-off, having the public assignees from the, the, who, Agno we have, versus a, a technical knowledgeable-
Exactly.
Professional that could do the same thing. It's, I'm not arguing for either, on tech, there is-
So just on, on just that, the PSP.
And how many PSPs have we ever come through here?
But it's the same as a-
Two.
Two in the last couple of years.
It's last year.
I know, but that's, that's what I'm saying, is, why, why would you have policy comments or just objections to something that's technical in there? And that's my point.
Right.
It, it is technical.
You know, why don't we live in a PZA right now? We've done it that way forever. It's never been an issue.
Yeah, if we roll along, we could always, you know, find out things that work better, switch a couple of things.
And, and that's why we asked the question.
All right, Deborah, what are you up to?
Okay, eminent domain-
We're almost done.
Yeah, we're almost done, almost done. Eminent domain is not something that we're looking at changing, it's approved by the land use administrator.
That's good, let, let them burn Brian's house now, and they can take their property, that's fine by me.
When's the last time we ever did an eminent?
Uh, we did about six of them.
We've done a bunch of them. Yeah, what, what this is, is that, uh, DOT came to us, I don't know if y'all remember, we had you adopt an ordinance, was it an amendment to Land Development Code?
Yes.
It was an amendment to Land Development Code. And basically what it did, it granted the land use administrator the ability to grant deviations that were the result in the eminent domain action. So what it does is it helps DOT get cure plans approved and save money on right-of-way expense, is what, is the intent of it. There were six of them, the, oh, the, the, not the riding, the, the resurfacing project that's ongoing right now on four twenty-six, we had six of them in that area.
I can give you a quick example. Some, DOT comes in to take two feet, and when the appraiser does the appraisal, they say it's all sorts of damages because DOT took that two feet and, 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 uh, left it as a non-conforming use, and maybe the city would grant a variance. And then the property owner says, I'm not gonna apply for a variance, I like getting severance damages. Well, this allows DOT to come in and say, we'll apply for it and see if you can get it, so the appraiser can lower it instead of two. So it avoids gambling.
Okay, next.
Okay, the next item is the master land use plan, and today it goes from the land use administrator to DRC, to PZA, and then to city council. Uh, we have eliminated DRC, and so the question is, should we keep PZA in that role, or should we, um, have the hearing officer in that role? And again, city council is the final approving authority on the master land use plan.
Now, before you start, one thing to take note, these master land use plans are ninety-nine percent of the time, I don't think we've had any other one associated with a non-statutory development. And earlier you said that non-statutory development agreement, you and staff, PZA, city council, so I would, I would recommend you just having to follow right along. I, we probably, we've never had a master land use plan deal with a site development, so they sort of go hand in hand.
You got us.
Okay, great. Um-
You have us on the same.
Building permits, uh, would be the next item. Um, those are for city projects, we discuss the private projects. Um, the next one would be the building permits related to city projects, um, and deviations related to the same. We're not, um, proposing any changes with these.
Okay, no changes.
So we're gonna, no.
What would they be?
It would be, um, land use administrator, straight to city council.
Okay.
At what point?
All of them, that was what we decided in the work session. For approval up to ten percent with staff, but then, everything recommending, we would recommend to city council.
Eleven, enough. And it's similar to the, it's similar to the process with the site development orders for the city projects.
So nothing's really changed?
Nothing has changed on those.
Okay.
And then you have the, um, building permits with the, um, downtown, new downtown zoning.
Okay, recommend comes up to us?
Mm-hmm. It goes right now from the land use administrator to the, um, city council. Right now it's, um, I'm sorry, right now it's the land use administrator who approves it, and so this one would be, um, recommending, hearing officer as a recommending body, and then city council as the, um, approval authority, and that's for twenty percent and up. Twenty-one percent and up.
Okay.
So if it's zero to ten, you get to the land use administrator, what's eleven to twenty?
It would be, did we, we decided that-
We should make that conform up above.
Yeah, we decided above.
Eleven and above.
Eleven and above would be-
It's the city council, I have written down city council.
Okay, or we have a, do we have a hearing officer intermediary, or just go straight to council?
It goes straight to city council. We were proposing, well, DRC, we were proposing DRC at one point, DRC went away. So there's nothing in between.
So it would be just like a, uh, so it'd be just like any, any, any permit in the downtown?
Mm-hmm.
Would be zero to ten, land use administrator, eleven and above, city council.
Yeah.
Let's make it, I, I would say let's make it conform to that exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna assume, unless there's something major, that most of this is gonna end up on consent agendas, is that what we're thinking?
Oh, that would be great. That would be great.
I, I, I will leave that in Brian's hands to make the determination, what do you think should be a hearing, and what should be consent? I mean, again, I, I, like I said earlier, and the three of us agreed, our, our goal here is to streamline process, not to burden us with three-hour meetings. And to give you some leverage.
Okay, so I believe we have, um, the consensus on the applications that we need to, to make processes for.
So now we're gonna take this, and we're gonna, we're gonna make it pretty, on what we all agreed on, and send it out to us.
Yes, yes.
Just give me, uh, I don't want you to name names, but the two absent council members, give me a feel for when this comes before us, are we gonna have a lot of discussion, or?
No.
We have, now we have consensus already.
There was one, uh, and I think we discussed with other council members too, that the hearing officer, uh, uh, it would, they like the idea, or one of them liked the idea, if we can afford it. So there was this issue of, you know, because it will have to be by them.
Pays for itself.
Pays for itself.
Because now we're not staff sitting here for three hours.
Yeah, okay, take staff time and, you know, and add three dollars to the budget.
One, one of them told us that, uh, they liked that, that staff handles everything, that was their ultimate goal.
For the future, yeah.
That in the interim time, that things would come to council that they would like to see.
Okay, Mr. Martin, next. What else you got, Mike?
That is all that I have for you tonight, in terms of process. I believe we have, um, a consensus on all the items.
I have, we have still one issue to discuss, if we're going to pursue the cap, the citizen awareness, uh, participation plan. Initially in the work session we discussed, and there was a, a general idea that we could customize the process. Should we still think about that?
I gotta be honest, I, I just take that idea from beginning to the end, I do, I don't find it on major brackets, you know, big, 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 big ones. I have no problem with making a developer go out, every little one, it's just a waste of time, it raises people's awareness, it gets people all upset over something that may never, ever, ever, ever even come to us. I just, just make it.
But is there something that you would like to us pursue, like the large scale, would be that, what you envision, like a requirement for large scale?
The opposite of what he said, is what I'm saying. No, I, I think, especially for large projects, much, very beneficial to get it out front, rather than be that painful rear-end, uh, action that we have to go through, but, uh, for small projects, it's, it's probably a, a non-issue anyway, because they, the activities won't, won't be as much, and it won't be as much interest in small projects.
At what point are you thinking about kicking it in? Like, at what point do you say, I just don't?
Well, that's, that's what we need to know, what, what is large.
I would be more happier with going, go get bigger signs like Winter Springs does, and make bill of these permanent bigger signs that are bright arms that say, something's happening here really soon, rather than a sign that's an eight and a half by eleven piece of paper, that's tacked on something that's twenty-seven feet above street level, and, you know, five feet back in, like a four nineteen property. There's no way you're gonna see that.
Winter Springs, believe it or not, does require those, those public meetings, but I don't know how they define scale.
No, I'm saying the sign, but I, I think the signs, I think the signs do getting-
They're metal. Well, I don't know how to define the scale either, but maybe you can recommend something for us.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against it. Yeah, I'm, I'm not against it, I just-
Well, I, I'll give you, I'll give you for instance, is, is nine thousand square feet a large-scale project?
Not, no.
You have one of your most controversial items this year was a nine thousand square foot retail building.
What's that, the, uh?
Dollar General. Would you require that for Dollar General?
Dollar General volunteered to do it themselves.
With a little Pepsi.
I think that's a bad example, what about the sanctuary?
Well, what, how is that a bad example?
That's a great example.
I'll let you guys-
It's a good example.
Because it was already sold in commercial.
It was already, yeah, but still, it's what's large.
They, they weren't changing anything, they were just coming in to-
I, I agree with you, but you understand, but you see what I'm saying is that it's next door to a-
What you think you're gonna, what you think maybe the, the point might not always be the point. You look at sanctuary and say it was the reverse, it was lowering, it was lowering from a commercial to, so the density is going down. If they're downgrading density-
Subdivision.
Do you require?
It's your single families next door.
I think it would've been better to go in there and tell them that early, and not surprise them, and say that, oh, there's not gonna be a church there, it's gonna be residential, tell them that early, and then work it out. Uh, rather than show up here one night, and we all find out, oh, they sold a, a church property for residential.
But who cares?
I know, that's, that's a thirty lot subdivision, is that large scale.
Thirty lots.
I, I guess, but that's the type of-
Nobody would have scaled with that.
Yeah.
That would be more, more aligned to me than the Dollar General.
We'll be happy to go look for, you know, we'll, we'll try to come up with something, but in the end, we're gonna need your, we're gonna need you all to-
But it's the same thing, it's like, what was the little school at the end of Kingsbridge?
East.
The little, uh-
Oh, the daycare.
The daycare.
Right.
Oh, that was a, another one of those, that just, it's already zoned, zoned that, but everybody thought that that was-
Conservation.
It was conservation area.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
The Bright House wanted to put the-
Of course, but, but everybody, but everybody came in, we had, we had multiple, but we had multiple meetings of people coming in saying-
They were more, yes.
But we had multiple meetings of people coming in saying, that's conservation. They told me when I was building, that's aligned to me.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, deal with misinformation, like-
But it's hard knowing that upfront.
But that's what's happening.
But that's what the problem ones, the problem ones are, that's what I'm saying, the problem ones are, are the ones that are like that, more than, it seems the problems are the-
I don't know.
Dollar General, it's already-
I've been here fifteen years, it's been working pretty well.
And, and how do you pick out the one that, that you require?
That's the hard part, that's gonna be the hard part, trying to, and I think that's why the other local governments just, just across the board said, go do it.
Well, there's only two that do it.
Lowered and-
Well, they exempt, uh, small scale, so they have small scale.
Well, long is optional, isn't it long is optional?
And, and Winter Springs does-
Long is optional, isn't it?
No, no, of, but both of them, they are, uh, a requirement, but they have a, a, a way to exempt, uh, small scales. And even if there is a, a project that they think they would impact the community, they also can exempt.
Play something, I think, I think bigger signs that we should look at.
Why don't, why don't we do it this way? Why don't we give the power to determine the land use administrator? The land use administrator will know when something's going to be controversial.
Well, you're gonna have to have that phone in your bag, you still gotta go in there.
Right, but then, but then you're gonna go like, again, a thirty, you're saying, a thirty, someone who's got a thirty could get one, it's like, why am I getting one when the other, the Dwight Sadoff one doesn't get one, but, and, and they've got a wall, they've got the same exact issue, the same exact night, they've got a, and you're letting it go, but, and they've got more homes, and they've got back-to-back residential to residential, like you're not requiring anything, so it's good enough to put, but, how, how do you pick the guy out that says, as I said, you, you can leave it to the, uh?
I'll, I'll let you all start to figure it out, I mean, no rush for it to come back.
Okay.
I, I don't mind large scale, but, you know, frankly, we, we, we're elected to make decisions, uh, you know, we just have to, you know, you know, big, big, bigger signs though, now Deputy Menshank has, you know, what's?
It will, if you want to have people to know, if you want to have people to understand and know, I never knew that they were doing something until it was, they were literally, they bulldozed down those two hundred trees, you know, at, at, at the corner of your quarter where they put the townhomes, until those pine trees that were there came down, I didn't know anybody was doing anything. I think signing into it helped, first of all, to get some awareness up.
And I think it creates sometimes fear, you know, when you, as many questions as you wanted to answer, developers aren't very good at going out there and answering the questions. Developers go out there and tell people what they're gonna do, what they're entitled to do, what they're this to do, what they're that to do, I mean, that's what's happening right now. I mean, you have a developer acting as if they've submitted something, telling everybody what they're going to do. You have residents telling them, oh, no, you're a nine, and there's nothing in front of us, nothing. So, we gotta figure it out. I don't know how.
Okay.
Big stuff, I have no problem.
Anything else?
Last question.
Since I got this, I'm gonna-
Last question.
I got something else.
I know, that's a little bit of them.
How urgent, because I think in the, uh-
That is not zoning in progress.
That is not-
That is not zoning in progress.
We got it. But for these one, I mean, are we-
For this?
Yes.
Oh, this, this, yeah. That's zoning in progress, yes.
This is fast?
Yes.
Before the land, land development code rewrite?
Yes.
Well, I think we submitted a timeline.
April, I'm sorry, April.
I, I'm not quite sure if, if that is, uh, realistic, but we can try to, we have to figure out if that will be-
I think-
Is that April tenth, April twenty-second, May nineteenth?
I, I think to do something with student, the multi-family, the townhome, the mixed use, that may have to follow.
Yeah.
Because you don't have architectural standards for it yet, and if you're bringing that to you, you'll have nothing to make your decision from. So it might be that it depends on stages as far as those are concerned.
Is that considered zoning in progress?
You admit.
We don't have the-
Get him a quick one.
Yeah.
And let's, and this table, and once you send this table out, then we're good with it, and can't the table just come to us, plus it, we're done?
Yeah.
Well, it, it's the whole chapter, right, that we have to, we do-
Yeah, you gotta go DRC, PZA, I saw-
Yeah. Getting rid of, rid of, uh, DRC.
And I think it's gonna, I think what's gonna make a difference as well, is if the budget is in place for the hearing officer. If we have to wait until, uh, October to get the hearing officer, then the DRC will still be in place, or maybe not, maybe we could just do without the DRC.
We look at what we might be saving from no DRC, beating everybody, and everybody just got an hour, three hours of their life back to do work, and what that affords us to pay for a hearing officer that needs to be paid. Twenty people, paying twenty people in a room for three hours versus paying one person up in there for five hours.
Hey, Brian, when you, when you do the chart?
That's great.
That's a trade-off we can work out.
Show us an existing versus what we agree to.
Yes.
Essentially, it, it sounds like we just made DRC. Essentially, it, it sounds like we just eliminate D R C.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You know, and, and instead of P C A having to worry about, um, three inches on the setback, or like the hearing officer just, you know, debate all that stuff, that sounded to me like the two major changes.